Okay, good morning. Welcome to the morning work session of the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors meeting today, Thursday, August, I mean Thursday, October 7th, 2021. A recording device will be in use during this meeting. We stand due to pledge allegiance. I always like that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First section is the public comment for agenda items. Rules for conduct of public meetings established by the Resolution 2001-08. The time allocated for each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the vice chairman in this case. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Does anyone out there have a comment on any of the agenda items at this time? If none, take a look at the Board of Supervisors' minutes for September 16th, 2021.
Take a motion maybe accepted as submitted?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a look at the treasurer's report. Look at all the bills.
for you to identify anyone's.
I have taken a look at them, Kyle.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Go ahead. You guys can move on. I'm still just going through this.
Okay, you're just going through the list of checks. All right, thank you.
So no motion needed?
Yeah, I'm in the middle of them right now.
No, that's at the monthly PM session that we have a motion to pay the bills based
Yep, go ahead.
Give me two minutes.
So, so pardon the interruption, Mr. Vice Chairman. on reports prepared by the treasurer.
Okay. Yep. Then, okay, to move on, Kyle then?
Since this is the AM session, there are checks available to sign, but there's no
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go with township roadmaster's report. Matt, yeah, I'd like you to read it, and I think you're planning to, right?
component of a treasurer's report in your packet.
Sure.
Great.
The department continues to work on damage from Hurricane Ida.
Okay.
So.
So strictly the authorization to pay bills, review and pay bills.
There were numerous places where creeks crested the road, causing erosion.
Yeah, typically this isn't a line item on the morning session, so my apologies.
Most of these areas have been repaired to date.
It's okay.
Old Horseshoe Pike remains closed due to extreme damage to a culvert. We received a report yesterday from Pinone's Bridge inspectors recommending the road remain closed until the structure can be replaced. They will provide, be providing a cost estimate for replacement of the structure. And included with this report, I have a, the work order update. I've been trying to email that to the board, like, at least weekly, to, so that you have an update as to progress on repairs needed from the hurricane.
Is, are there any other township roads that are closed besides the one you just mentioned?
No, Old Horseshoe Pike is the only township-owned road. I, I'm not sure if there are any state roads closed at this time.
Okay.
Not, not in East Brandywine Township. However, Bonsville Road is not yet open, as I understand, in Cowan Township, so you're gonna have some trouble getting down that road, although not in East Brandywine.
Luke, do we have any update from PennDOT what they're doing about the bed sections in the 1600 block along the guardrail? Because...
I do not. The only thing I received was a PA1 call that they were working along, that they had hired a contractor to work along Bonsville Road in Cowan Township, but I haven't heard anything in reference to the section in East Brandywine Township. I know they did the long 322 in Cowan Township at the bottom of the hill down towards the bypass, so PennDOT's got their hands full also, so I imagine they're working their way around, making repairs as they, as they can.
And what was that? Were they reinforcing the road down there, just below the new development that's being built?
Yeah, I believe the, that stream that contribu, contributory to Beaver Creek had overflowed and caused erosion along the edge of roadway and under the guiderail and everything, so it looks like they reinforced that with stone. And that was a contractor that was working on that too, not a, not PennDOT themselves.
And do we know if that's finished or not?
It looked finished, but I can't say whether it is or not.
Anything else, Kyle? Anything else you need the report on, or is that it?
No, further down in the agenda is the six-year plan.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Matt. Let's move on to old business. Luke?
Yeah, is there anyone in the House who would like to speak on this subject? I'd probably be better.
Good morning.
Good morning. If you, if you would use the microphone at the lectern so that remote parties can hear, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. My name is Gina Gerber. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, BAPs. We are here this morning because we...
Just state your, for the secretary, just state your address as well.
Sure. It's Gina Gerber. My office address is 717 Constitution Drive. That is Suite 201 in Exton, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So we're here this morning to request an extension of the prior conditional use approval that you granted back on April 16th of 2021. As you may recall, the applicant is proposing to use the property located at 1155 and 1157 Horseshoe Pike for a Hindu temple. They are not proposing any land development. The parking is already adequate and in place. We are running into a little bit of a difficulty, unfortunately, in connecting and organizing the connection to the utilities, so the water and the gas utilities. So as we're working through that particular problem, we are asking for an extension. As you may know, your ordinance allows six months for an applicant that has received conditional use approval to file an application for the building permit. And unfortunately, we're not quite there yet. We're pretty close. We were asking for a six-month extension to extend the approval through April of 2022. And we think that we probably won't need all of that time, but in an abundance of caution, we are asking for a six-month extension just to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row so that we can proceed with, with just the minor fit-out and occupation.
So are you guys using the facility for anything as we wait?
Currently, it's not being used. Is that correct, Darshan?
They do meet, small meetings.
Why don't you come on up? Sorry. I'm joined this, this morning by Darshan Patel, who's here on behalf of the applicant as well.
Good morning. So we did request the township, if we can use the facility for small meetings to discuss planning and, you know, allow us to make sure we get all the things that we need to get done. So that's the only purpose that they're using it for.
So you're having a problem with, say, they get electrical and...
Gas connections. So right now it's on propane gas. So there's supposedly gas on the street, and there's also water on the street or behind us, I forget which one it is. But there's public water also available, so we're trying to figure out a way where we can have public water and gas to make sure the building's heated properly, first of all, and also making sure we have public water to make sure, you know, if we need to do anything, we have enough water, depending on the well water.
Wouldn't that have been all functional with the hardware still?
Well, it's, it's well water right now and propane fuel for the, for the heating. So I would assume that you can still utilize the property under those circumstances until it's actually severed and connected and that...
So they used to have actually a wood furnace there. I don't know if you guys recall.
That's right, yep.
And they took the wood furnace with them. So we didn't really have, we don't really have heating and, you know, we can look at electric pumps, but, you know, we thought gas would be the best option. So we want to make sure we get a gas connection and, you know, obviously that delays the mechanical plants that the township requires.
Yeah, and I guess my only concern, I don't necessarily have a big concern, but my only concern would be utilizing the facility without a UNO, you know, for legality reasons, obviously.
Right.
So that would be if, if, you know, an outside site meeting, I would have no problem, but, you know, obviously if the, the inside was being utilized without a use and occupancy, we could run into a problem there.
Right. I believe we requested about 15, we, when we said we would have meetings, we said we would have about 15 people, 15 to 20, I'm not sure exactly what we said. But that's the maximum number of people. We're not advertising as open.
Sure, sure.
We're not, you know, inviting anyone to come in. There's none of that. But we would have, you know, meetings just to make sure things get done. You know, they put in new carpet, so there are certain things that they're doing interiorly to improve the facility, but that's the extent of that.
I, I did see when I drove by one day, it looked like about 15 cars in the parking lot.
Right. I'm not sure. I wasn't there for that meeting, but as I said, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that the, there's a limited amount of people there, and it's not being used in any public assembly sort of way. If we were, we would just ask the township for that permission.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with the extension, me personally. And again, I don't consider water and, and heat to be an essential item for, for, in the summer, you know, or into the fall, rather, but clearly electric, obviously, so no one trips in there while you guys are, you know, having your meeting for site management purposes. But I don't have a problem for site management.
Yeah, so quite a, but, but the building's pretty big, and we just, and it's old, as you know, and there's been multiple additions to it. So we had inspected, structural engineer roof inspections. We want to make sure it's safe, and it's just taking a little bit more time than, you know, we need to get the inspections done and then draw the plans.
Yep.
And then get the quotes and whatnot, what we need.
Any, okay, to approve?
The six-month extension.
Six months, you're okay with six months?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to grant BAPs the six-month extension on the conditional use decision that was rendered in April of 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, I appreciate that.
No, you're welcome.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for coming in this morning. Okay, Matt, on your six-year plan?
Sure. Good morning again. In July of this year, I presented a six-year plan to the board. Sorry, my glasses are fogging up. This plan includes the current condition of township-owned roads, road projects planned for the future, along with the equipment purchases needed to maintain township infrastructure and the fleet. Also included is a need for additional road department personnel and equipment storage. This is a working document and will be revised every year. I respectfully request the board accept the six-year plan as presented.
Have you had a chance to go through it? I would like some time to go through it, say, I would assume that additional personnel and equipment storage would be part of the budget, that presentation later this year.
Yeah. Yeah, if you may, I appreciate Roadmaster putting pen to paper and coming up with a long-term plan over many years. Feedback from the Budget Committee has been steering Public Works towards a multi-year plan for the maintenance of roads, staffing of the organization, and equipment replacement. So, yes, it clearly has budget implications. The, we are in the, by way of just background on where we are on the budget process, there will be a dedicated board meeting, a presentation of the budget on October the 28th. There is one more Board of Supervisors' meeting prior to that. But I would like to know the, the board's view of Matt's proposal prior to the budget meeting that will...
Okay, two things. I would like to see the budget prior to the public meeting on the 28th, and also if there is a personnel request, to me, it has to be substantiated, not just I need a body. I need to see exactly what it is, and that it's not, clearly is not in the six-year plan. I mean, I appreciate you finding, putting the six-year plan together, because I know each year you've been harped on about getting something together, and I trust this takes into effect, you know, the roads that have not been paved, et cetera, for the longest sake. But personnel's gotta be, gotta be shown and proven, you know, if we're talking about adding a body or more.
Right, well, I'm, sorry, just as a point of order, the, the, the plan is not reproduced in your packet today.
Okay.
It was in, it was, it was in previous packets and was distributed electronically, but I would submit that, that Matt has answered those questions in, in that document.
Okay. Personnel and equipment storage. Both items have been adequately addressed in that.
Right.
Okay.
And if there's any changes or any recommendations from the board, you know, I'm very much open for, for, you know, any recommendations, that's for sure. The main thing is the, the roads themselves. We went through and identified the condition of all the roads, and in preparing the six-year plan, kept a, essentially about a $450,000 budget yearly, and added the roads accordingly to try and, to try and keep a equal number in the budget for the next six years. In other words, you don't get hit with a million dollars one year and 50,000 the following year, just trying to work that into the...
So you're using 450 as the paving number to be drawn from capital funds every year?
Combination of capital funds and liquid fuels funds.
And liquid fuel funds.
Right.
Hey, Matt, is there a way to coordinate this with, with neighboring townships to save on the asphalt? In other words, have you reached out to West Brandywine or Cowan to see if they were planning on doing anything at the same, near the same area?
We have tried that in the past. There was a consortium with West Brandywine and some other townships, but in order to join in with that, they were requiring township manpower for essentially a month, over a month out of the, out of the year, out of the summer, for, for paving projects. And I do not have the manpower to, you know, to give up that time. In other words, they were paving, pretty much doing the paving themselves. They weren't hiring a contractor at that time. I don't know exactly if they're, they're still doing that or not.
I just think it would be...
That could be a decent savings.
Yeah, well, if we reached out to West Brandywine, they've got new developments going up on 322 as we speak, and if we reached out to them and said, hey, are you guys gonna have any paving going on, you know, while we're, we're doing ours in this vicinity to share the, share the asphalt cost and, and break it down that way? But clearly, it strengthens the numbers, and, you know, I don't think it would hurt. I, I don't, I'm not saying go to Exton, but I'm thinking Cowan and West Brandywine for sure. I mean, they're in the same boat we are. In fact, they're going under a bunch of new supervisors, right, as we speak as well, so they may not even be aware of what their future, you know, projects are. But I believe John Castle's just reached out, just started working for Public Works over there. He was their old supervisor at West Brandywine. He would probably be the recommendation that I would say, because he would know the behind the scenes of what they were thinking about as well.
You're saying at least reach out to both townships, see what they have on the drawing board for next year, and see if combining is a possibility?
Correct, yep. The same with the salt purchases in, in the wintertime.
Yeah, salt, we get through the state Co-Stars program, so, and pretty much every municipality.
Does Co-Stars offer an asphalt supplier?
I, I am not sure about that.
I mean, that would be the second thing, just out of curiosity, because obviously the state's buying it as well, and if that's a, yeah, so those two things would be my only recommendation.
Yeah, and if you could kindly check in the Co-Stars, just make a call and check.
So, so when we bid a road project, it is, it includes labor and materials.
Right, right.
We've broken it out in the past before, and if the materials don't show up, then the, we get charged a surcharge by the laborers because they're waiting for materials, and it's just, this way, the, the contractor's responsible for the materials. Just makes it, makes the contractor responsible for everything instead of breaking out materials.
Okay. I guess can we table this to our next meeting? So it gives us three a chance to review?
Well, either that or, did you say the 28th was the, the next budget meeting?
Yeah, I, and as Mr. Sherrock indicated, it is my intent to give a draft of the budget well in advance of that, but it is, I will not know a direction for completing certain line items for Public Works until I know the board's view on this proposal. So I will distribute something regardless of, of, of a vote, of a board's vote to adopt this plan, but there are some things I don't know until I know the board's feelings about this plan. Is that fair? I can still, I can plug numbers into it.
I think you gotta plug them in. We gotta take a look at what it looks like, and then it's easier to draw from there.
Right.
That's all. You've got to put in what Matt's looking for, or what any other department head or issues are, and we've got to address them. Agree?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome. Let's move on to new business, Luke, regarding Bonsville Mill.
Yeah, included in your packet is a, is a letter summarizing telephonic bids collected by Rocky Stone, volunteer for the Bonsville Mill Park. The project they want to complete is to add a oil-fired boiler to Building C in Bonsville Mill. The reason this project has priority this year is because the, they're adding a well for the future gardens, and that well equipment would be in this room, and heat is a priority to avoid freezing in Building C. The, Mr. Stone reached out to four qualified vendors. Two declined to bid, and we have two quotes, and the quote, the, the low quote is $19,427, and that is below the threshold for advertised bidding, but above the threshold for requiring telephonic quotes. So at this time, I respectfully asked the board to hire Boyd's Heating and Cooling to install a, the heating system described in the memo in Building C at Bonsville Mill Park.
Just two questions. One, is this project part of their plan for this year?
Yes, so the, the, it is not covered in the, the grant, but since the, the grant envisions the, the construction of a park, which will need irrigation features, yes, that's how it has gotten prioritized for this year.
And so the grant will cover this?
No.
Where will the money come from then?
From the, the money allocated in the budget to Bonsville Mill Park from the township's capital reserve that had previously been in the open space fund prior to last year's transfer.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, Kyle?
None.
I'll make a motion to accept on behalf of the Bonsville project, the bid from Boyd's Heating and Cooling. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Next, Luke, if you want to discuss the motion on regarding Linda. Before we do that, I just have a question. I guess I spoke to her. Is, it is true that a volunteer cannot be on two different township committees?
Well, it, it's not just any two township committees. It is specifically related to the zoning hearing board. And, and Mr. Jonas, are you still with us?
I understand you got a solicitor's opinion, so...
I am here. I am here, Luke.
Right, so, so we, we, there's a, there's a question here about qualifications for someone serving on the zoning hearing board and their appointment to other committees in the township. Specifically, can someone on the zoning hearing board serve on other committees?
Yeah, the statute, the statute, I think I sent you an email about this. We're having the statute now, the statute precludes the appointment to the zoning board of someone who is an employee or holds another position in the township.
And a volunteer, and, and that being even a volunteer on another committee?
There'd be an appointed or an elected position.
So are we saying a person couldn't be on Bonsville Mill Committee and a Parks and Recreation Committee and a Trails Committee?
That is not my understanding, but the, the, the restriction is contained in the municipality's planning code and pertains to the zoning hearing board? Is that correct, Mr. Jonas?
Yeah, the, what I'm referring to is the, is the state statute. Are we talking about a permanent member or an alternate or both?
Or both. I'm just, I'm just trying to identify the fact that, is it the zoning committee that only allows you to be on that one and nothing else, or other than a zoning board committee?
It says, members, this is for...
You can go on three different committees if you're a volunteer.
This is for a regular member. Members of the board shall hold no other elected or appointed office in the municipality, nor shall any member be an employee of the municipality. That's, that's from Section 903 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code.
Well, she's appointed by the board, that's what makes her appointed. She's elected, if she's elected by the, by the people, for the people, so she could be, she could just show up and not be, what do they call it? In fact, there's a word where the, where basically you're there, but you have no voting rights whatsoever.
And a volunteer, and, and that being even a volunteer on another committee?
It'd be an appointed or an elected position.
So are we saying a person couldn't be on Bonsville Mill Committee and a Parks and Recreation Committee and a Trails Committee?
That is not my understanding, but the, the, the restriction is contained in the municipality's planning code and pertains to the zoning hearing board. Is that correct, Mr. Jonas?
Yeah, the, what I'm referring to is the, is the state statute. Are we talking about a permanent member or an alternate or both?
Or both. I'm just, I'm just trying to identify the fact that, is it the zoning committee that only allows you to be on that one and nothing else or other than a zoning board committee?
Members, this is, this is for...
You can go on three different committees if you're a volunteer.
This is for a regular member. Members of the board shall hold no other elected or appointed office in the municipality, nor shall any member be an employee of the municipality. That's, that's from section 903 of the Pennsylvania Municipal planning code.
Well, she's appointed by the board. That's what makes her appointed. She's elected if she's elected by the, by the people, for the people. So she could be, she could just show up and not be, what do they call it?
Alternate.
Fact, there's a word where the, where basically you're there, but you have no voting rights whatsoever. And, and volunteer her time, not elected nor appointed.
I'm just trying to understand because she's a volunteer and she wanted to work on two committees, which is...
But she's appointed by the board in the beginning of the year at the, at the annual reorg meeting. So that's where the appointed technically comes in.
Comes into play, okay.
But I, I, me myself, I wouldn't have a problem, again, as Georgia stated, a volunteer is a volunteer, whether, you know, but I can understand where the legality stands. If a, a voting member on the zoning board was also a voting member on another board, they could have a conflict of interest. So I don't have a problem with her if she wanted to, to just volunteer her time on her own unappointed nature.
But not be appointed?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Okay.
Go ahead, proceed, Luke.
Okay, yeah, so, so the, the, the action item here would be a, a, a motion from the board to accept the resignation of Linda McNeil from the Parks and Recreation Committee. And the, the reason for her resignation is that later on the agenda, the board will be considering appointing her to the zoning hearing board. So we're not losing her, her, her services, but she is transitioning from one board to another.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Linda McNeil from the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have anything under subdivision and zoning apps, I assume, and we can move on to the ordinance and resolutions for consideration, Luke?
Okay. Lisa, sorry to put you on the spot. Is, are the resolutions in the packet?
I've signed them, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, so there is just a single copy for signature. Okay, I, I just, I, it wasn't in my packet, so no problems. So, so before you, it was Resolution 5 of 2021. The resolution would appoint Nicole Rossi to the zoning hearing board to fill the, the remaining unexpired term vacated by John Kerrigan when he resigned at our last meeting. At this time, I respectfully ask the board to adopt Resolution 5 of 2021.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next for you is Resolution 6 of 2021, appointing Jason Frank and Linda McNeil to the zoning hearing board as alternate members.
Any, any questions? So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, does anybody out there in the crowd have any public comments on non-agenda items?
I, I, I do have a, a, a point. Chairman Winters requested an agenda item that staff was not able to add prior to the 24-hour deadline. That is new to, to us in, in township work. It took effect in late August. We can however amend the agenda to take up this action item, I believe. I'm gonna put a mark on the spot and ask, is, well, let me, let me start with Jason. Jason, do you still want to discuss the open space acquisition?
I'm not. Right now, it's not fine. It's not that good. We'll get it cleaned up.
Okay, so you will just do it at a later meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll take it.
Do it later.
Okay, well then that, that makes it a moot point about amending the agenda.
Okay, okay, seeing no, no one wishing to talk on non-agenda item. Oh, you do? Okay.
Uh, this question is for Mr. Bruce Rawlings, Planning Commission?
I, I'm still gonna have to ask you to approach the microphone so that our remote parties can hear you.
Sorry, sorry, Jason. Bruce Rawlings, Planning Commission. Tonight, we have a conditional use hearing for the plant McCauslin and I was asking, I just want to clarify it, that the Planning Commission cannot be a party to that, but we can address the meeting and I want to make sure we can address the meeting tonight as a individual or a planning commission. So, Mr. Jonas, I talked to Zach and he kinda, he was, he was a little unsure which way it could go. I just want your opinion and what I should do for tonight.
The, the audio is very choppy.
I'm sorry.
I only could hear parts of the question, but I think this is something that I've already addressed in an email. But if Luke or the chair could restate what the question is?
The question is, how, how, how is the Planning Commission going to present their conditions tonight as a planning commission or an individual? And when in the meeting is that going to be taken? When should we ask to do it?
Well, the, it's, it's a, it's a public hearing. I'm not, I'm not sure right now who, how the hearing is going to be formatted, whether the chair of the board of supervisors will be running the hearing. But the, in typical fashions with public hearings, there is an opportunity, because it's a public meeting, there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting for there to be public comment. There is also an opportunity, since it's a judicial proceeding, for certain persons with, who have ownership interests in, in property to seek party status. The applicant, through his counsel, can ask questions and challenge party status. But if the question really relates to a committee or an agency of the township, that wouldn't, they would not qualify as a party to the proceeding if they... Certainly there'll be an opportunity for the Planning Commission to present its report and recommendations during the meeting, but the Planning Commission would not be a proper party. Again, party is almost without exception is someone who owns their property in the immediate area, who would be affected in a way that'd be different from the general public. And so the Planning Commission, as an agency of the township, would not, in my opinion, have, have party status, but would have the opportunity to present its report. I think, keep in mind some other things. This is a, this is a legal proceeding as opposed to a legislative proceeding. The state statute does not require Planning Commission review of a conditional use applications. And probably the reason for that is because the Board of Supervisors' decision is based on hearing evidence presented at the hearing. Planning Commission will not have had the benefit when it made its recommendation of hearing the testimony and evidence at the hearing, including from the applicant and from persons who are given party status. And recommendations or conditions are going to be those that are limited to those that are required by the ordinance, those that are based upon the evidence or those that are accepted by the applicant. But circling back to the main point, the Planning Commission would not be an entity that would be a party to a conditional use hearing, but certainly during the hearing, the Planning Commission will make its report and recommendations to the Board of Supervisors as the hearing body.
So last night, we were requested to make an opinion and recommendation to the, to the, for the meeting tonight. So the, the Planning Commission is part, and I don't necessarily need to be a party. I just want to make sure we can have a chance to make, make discussion of what we talked about. So the planning, the board has all the information. We recently have...
Certainly unauthorized, certainly unauthorized representative of the Planning Commission will have an opportunity to be heard during the hearing.
Okay.
If I get to the question too though, so you guys will present your findings, results from last night. I guess the question is, do you do it at the beginning?
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
Do you listen to the people?
Yeah.
And do you, or you do it at the end after the people talk?
I don't want it to get lost, similar to the special exception where we didn't even get to have a meeting to talk about the special exception on this particular project. They had a meeting, the zoning hearing board didn't even know anything about the particular development or we didn't even have a chance to make a presentation. So I'm just making sure we have a chance to make a presentation before the zoning hearing board starts, not the zoning hearing, but you guys maybe.
Conditional, you know, hearing goes.
So I'm just worried, just clarifying where we, what, what it should be in.
Yeah, that's the key. What do you think, Carl?
I would assume it should be towards the end. Let them have their, their say first and then input at the end is what I would recommend.
Okay.
And then earlier today, I was talking to Matt about township road and the paving going to the Dorland Mill Estates and that little road is pretty, pretty bad and Matt says that the developer's taking care of it. But that particular road is going to be 20 feet and it's leading into a 24-foot cartway during, in the development. And I feel there's still a lot of trees that are in the way of that cartway. It's going to be a spine road, high-trafficed road going through there. And I think, still think a few trees need to be removed and that road slightly widened. So I know Panoni can look at it and Matt's looked at it. Maybe Chief, you could take a look at it just to see what you feel about that road. Because you know how people park on the side of the road and it gets, all the trucks and buses come up and down. It's, to me, it's a, I'm worried about the safety of the kids and people on that particular road. So if somebody could take a, a second look at it, that would be helpful to somebody in the future, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Nothing, if nobody has anything further, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
And then hit the executive session.
Oh, that's right. There will be, there will be an executive session following the foundation, East Brandywine Foundation meeting this morning.
We should also announce that the, the, the board had an executive session on Thursday, September 23rd to discuss legal matters.
Okay.
And as discussed at multiple occasions during, today, there will be a conditional use hearing this evening at 7:30 PM.
7:30 or 7?
7:30, I believe.
Confirmed, definitely 7:30?
Look, online it says 7.
Does it say 7? Okay.
I think it's at 7 PM.
Yep.
I have it at 7 o'clock as well.
I thought I had to.
Okay.
7 PM, I stand corrected.
Okay, can we finally make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.